Yeah, we do, whenever possible.
It's called a order. Uh, let's start with the roll call.
Nancy Kupka.
Here.
Julia Beckman.
Here.
Deb Boyle.
Here.
Mike Davenport.
Here.
Don Renner.
Here.
Terry Pavasich.
Here.
Andrew Cavenato.
Here.
Wow. Thank you, and do we have to announce our, our names, or not?
No.
No, okay, I always get some. Okay, we'll go, move to the pledge of allegiance, a very great, good stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, first thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the July 20th business meeting, the July 20th closed meeting, and the August 3rd closed meeting.
I move we approve those.
Terry moves to approve.
I'll second.
Julia seconds.
I'm trying to make this.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
Julia Beckman.
Aye.
Deb Boyle.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Rick Cavenato.
Aye.
And Nancy Kupka.
Aye, thank you very much, okay, we'll move on to the reception of visitors. The meeting agenda includes two opportunities for comments from the audience. This first reception of visitors is intended for audience members to address the board about any agenda item on which the board will vote. The second visitors, uh, reception of visitors is intended for audience members to address the board on any topic pertaining to Community High School District 99. Comments will be limited to three minutes, to provide all visitors an equal opportunity to address the board. Anybody like to address the board?
Yeah, I think this will be.
Hearing none, we'll move on to the recommendations and reports of the superintendent, Dr. McDonald.
Thank you, Dr. Kupka, the first report is from our, uh, transportation contractor for student, they're gonna talk to us about, uh, their preparation for the night, 2015-16 school year. Now, I, I'm not sure I know who's presenting to us, so please, identify yourselves. We can yell at you next week.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Madam President.
Still confidence, right?
Members of the board, I'm Tim Stever, area general manager with First Student, been with them for about 20 years in the industry. Joanne Veman here, my manager over at our Westmont location is directly responsible for your day-to-day operations. I just wanna hit a few quick bullets here, let you know a little bit who we are, what we do, and some of the facts for our business, and some of our challenges working for your district, and the other two that are in this consortium with you. We run over 250 vehicles out of our Westmont lot, have over 300 employees, we have eight contracted customers, including yourselves, 58 and 68. A little bit about last year, the bid timing, we were awarded the bid on, uh, April 21st, and having been in the business, and I do a lot of bids, and you run 100 buses, 94 route buses as spares. If you ever, when you go to bidding again, please try and give us six months for somebody a good, fair chance to be ready, it better results, it will help, so. We have 95 route buses, 105 buses dedicated to your district and drivers. Routing, um, that gave us some challenges the first year, we were using manual routes when we started, we put in a new Versatrans routing system last year, so we can pair and change routes very quickly, readily, things like that. Beauty of the Versatrans routing system is it does give pretty accurate right and left, so if, even if I get a new driver, yourself, give you a route sheet, you should be able to find it pretty well, pretty easy, that really helps. Details, kinda, when we bid it, there was 73 AMs and 81 PM packages that said in one of the bid packages, when we did the rounding, and I says, "Mark, we need 110 buses," and we discussed, and we actually down, nah, that's too many, you know, we came down to probably 85 or something, 90 something, we ended up with 94 route buses. But, we figured that out with two weeks before school started, and then we had to make all the changes, the, the, we already published the route time schedules, so we had a problem when we shrunk them, we switched some times, and that created many issues for your district, which we apologize and did our best to quit, fix them as quick as we could. Currently, you have 47 AM routes, 50 PM routes, and, so you know, that's 17,000 opportunities a year just to be on time to your schools, 17, just your district. You add the 58 and 68, which are paired to your, that's about 40, or 60,000 opportunities for us to be on time at just the school buildings, AM or PM, not to mention all the stops. It is a challenge, and transportation's not perfect. Last year with drivers, well, I tell you, the good news, best news here to tell you, we have 100% of your routes full, matter of fact, every route at Westmont's full, we have a 10% bench, plus we have extras on top of that, so, starting out, we're in great shape right now for drivers. Last year, we were 10 to 15 short when it started, plus the route issues, we had 150 new people, didn't know the area, that kinda stuff, so it created a lot of challenges for us. So you know, on a driver, when we recruit one, it takes three to four weeks to get him trained, so, that's why we need the longer period nowadays to try and get him through the system, things like that. Prior to start, we run all our drivers through, uh, safety meetings, we have a long day of safety meetings, and we do what's called diminishing, diminishing clearance, and, uh, mirror station, so, 'cause every bus is different, and all these mirrors, you make sure they can see the back wheels, where the kids may be, stuff like that, that's, every year. We also have up to 10 safety meetings a year, 10 hours of safety meetings, ongoing to keep state in front of them. Buses, we bought mostly new buses, or year-old buses last year, 105 of them, took a lot to get them in thing. Staffing, we added 110 drivers last year, assistant manager, safety person, dispatcher, three techs, all of this in less than four months, that was pretty good. We had our issues, I mean, we didn't have our routes right, when we made the Versatrans map, our timing was wrong, we didn't find out, and it created a problem at the beginning, and, again, that created issues for all three districts, we worked hard to get it fixed. This year, we do have a better communication with the district, not only Mark, but Lukeya and Ken at the schools, Joanne's got a great relationship with them, we understand your business a lot better, so the communications is better, the buses are there in place, we're not having to rush to get everything done, the drivers are familiar with your district, things like, we're in a lot better shape than we were last year. At the end of the day, you know, we do have some opportunities, we were talking with Mark and Lukeya the other day about, you know, possible, maybe a Z-Pass system where we could get electronic ridership, 'cause right now, we don't know which students are gonna ride, so, right now, we have route, some routes that we routed with 120 students on it, because spirits tells us there'd be less than 50 that ride on that bus, but, first day of school, we might find out 60 of them show up, so then we gotta send a sub bus over to pick up the overflow, stuff like that, we're gonna have those issues. We'd like to get it to an electronic system, a ridership, where we know how many people are riding, and then we could level the loads a little bit, stuff like that. There's always loads, some days you'll see a bus that you see is a little bit light, the other constraint we have is time, 'cause your routes are paired with other districts, in the morning, we're not allowed to pick up for, till about 6:50, we drop off at 7:30, so it's only a 40-minute route, so, you can't really, you could fill up a bus, but it's gonna take a lot longer than 40 minutes, otherwise, kids would have to get up. So these are two of the constraints we're working with the district officials to try and make it better. That's really all I have, um, we look forward to a better start, and we believe, honestly believe, with our team in place, that we're in pretty good shape right now for the year, so, any questions?
No, no. I believe in.
I might just add, um, we have had a great working relationship with First Student, we had a rough start, we know, we know what caused that start, um, we have, I personally have looked at the driver sheets to see what instructions they have, match their times to the, uh, the routes that are posted on our websites or being handed out today in registration, so, that was the big problem last year, a big variation there, and not being able to really just change it the next day. It takes a long time to communicate to the students what time, uh, the routes are gonna start, and to head, so it took us the first couple of weeks, working with First Student to, to get that squared away, and that, at least that issue, we know isn't gonna be a problem. And, again, we, we have a lot of confidence in what they're saying, and I know there's other companies that are having a hard time right now with drivers, um, that was something we talked about, that's possibility that some of those drivers might get poached, uh, but we hope that doesn't happen, that's about, right now, the only flag that we could, you know, possibly see is messing up the beginning of the year, so, uh, we, we look forward to a good start and a great year with, for students, so.
Thank you.
We're hopeful.
Well, thank you, and thank you for addressing our concerns, and I saw at least two buses out today, making runs.
Oh yeah, been dry runs all week, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
The tentative budget?
Okay, Dr. Kupka, um, in the summer is, uh, when we work on budget, we begin with the, end of the fiscal year report, now we're on to the tentative budget, and Mark and his, um, office have done a tremendous amount of work, and I'll turn the program over to him.
Okay, and so, uh, this is our, our tentative budget, it's tentative, is it needs to be on display for at least 30 days, uh, we will put it on display no later than Wednesday at the, uh, local libraries, a couple libraries, and also at each of our three attendance centers, so that'll be at T-99, it'll be at North, and it'll be at South, and their offices, as well as the ASC. And if, if, if there's really just a couple, I won't go through the whole memo with you, with you, but I, I do wanna point out some big things, 'cause there are a couple unusual things this year. One positive is that, that it is balanced, um, uh, last year, you know, we had a, we did have a, a positive balance, but only if we issued 1.5 million in funding bonds, we pulled that, um, and, uh, ended up with a fairly good loss last year. It looks greater, if you look at the very first beginning column at the very bottom, it, it really was about a million dollar loss last year, the, the difference there is because the, the figure on the top now includes, uh, some of the fund reorganization transfers in the, in the health benefit fund, and so that was really the net change in, in that balance, but the, from operations, it was about a million dollar loss last year, instead of the 750,000 that we expected, so it was a little greater than we expected. But, in, in terms of the, the fund balance, it's, it's balanced really because of a couple key things, one is that we are, uh, when we get to the revenues and expenditures, we're, we're making a recommendation, at least at this tentative level, to, um, have some of our life safety work completed with the use of life safety bonds, which is allowable, it's, it's in conjunction with the tax caps, it's a part of our debt service extension base, and, and, um, what it does, it comes at a time when we really do need to get some relief in our operating funds, so it's, it's perfect timing for, from that perspective. And we don't, we don't have our life safety work complete yet, we don't have the, the total project listed, it should be done, we hope, in the next month, we hope to bring it to you in September, um, October at the very latest, but we think it'll be September, and at that point, we can come up with, and, and show you the exact, uh, projects that we expect are, uh, subject to that mandate, it's, it's required that you do this every 10 years, you identify life safety projects, and then it's, depending on the nature of the project, it has to be done within a one-to-five-year period, and in some smaller projects, less important, can get done over a 10-year period at times. But we'll have, uh, as much of the details we can provide you in, in September, along with the funding plan for that. Our guess right now is it'll be somewhere about 3.5 million dollars, uh, maybe as much as 5 million, but we're, the budget here looks, looks to, um, identify 3.5 million dollars of, approximately, of projects that we already have in our five-year plan, that we're, so there's, that's the good part, and why I'm presenting it now with the fund balances, because we should be able to take some of the pressure off of our building funds and the capital projects we have there, we should be able to do the boilers at North, that's one that we've clearly fee will, will be, uh, life safety, and it'll, so it'll take some of the architectural service, purchase services off, as well as capital outlay, uh, off of our operating funds, and help us rebuild our, our reserves up a little bit, so we have, uh, what I would want it, be at a safer level here. This is shown on the modified accrual basis, so it, it does include the health benefit funds there, 3.3%, uh, that's the majority of that balance, so we do need to focus on, uh, getting some relief in our operating funds, and probably, we're gonna have to take a pretty hard look at all of our expenditures this year, and, and do a comb-through again, I mean, we did this every couple of years, pretty hard, but this year, I think we're gonna have to hit it again, um, so we'll be looking to do that with our, our staff, talking to them about reducing expenditures, um, and then we'll, we'll have that for the, we won't have that for our projection, but we'll have that as a project this year to try and reduce some, some key areas. So it won't be the normal year, where we just look for energy savings and just other things, we're gonna be looking probably at some, at some suggestions for reductions for next year's budget, but we'll, we'll talk about that more at the projection in September. Right, we'll go to the revenues, and there's just a couple key things, really a big change this year is, if you look at the, the three items that have some of the larger balances, uh, property taxes is pretty straightforward, that's, that's, uh, just basically our CPI and new construction, it's a tiny bit up, uh, this year, because, recall last year, we, we didn't get quite 100% of our, our taxes, we do expect some of that to carry over into this year, um, and so it's, it's a little bit higher than our normal expectation for property taxes, some of that is the prior year levy that's lumped in there with it. Uh, but the key things that stand out, uh, at least for me, are, uh, registration fees and, and state aid, uh, as being, it's too higher, uh, and, a little bit on the food services side as well. The registration fees and, and food services is a related issue, um, we had, uh, a lot of doubts about the way that the, that ISB was gathering information, and I think they just get information provided to them by the Department of Human Services, uh, about who's Medicaid eligible, and they were providing us lists of individuals that were direct certified, that they're saying, "These individuals, you have to give them free and reduced lunch, they're directly certified, can't verify it, can't do anything with it." And, and since 2008, um, actually, I think 2009 is when they first started that, um, we saw our free and reduced go up, and now some of it, we attributed to the economy and the recession. But, as, talking with other schools, we started saying, "This just doesn't feel right," the Medicaid numbers, we're getting calls from some parents to say, "I know you said we're direct certified, but we, we tried to get off that list, we're not, we don't feel we are," they actually, we had some parents who actually sent us their, their registration fees, even though we, we, let's say, they paid their fees, we got this direct certification after they paid the fees, we refunded them to them, and a couple of families returned the checks, said, "No, we, we aren't on, we shouldn't be on that list," so that's what's.
Wow, that's really great.
It wasn't a large number, and it wasn't probably enough to do a wholesale change, but we, we finally, as the economy started coming back, we weren't seeing these, these people roll off, and so, not people, but I mean, with the name, it was probably different people, but just the numbers were still feeling too high from the percentages. So we completely split the program up in terms of, of using the free and reduced list from the state for our waivers, and, um, went to just a pure manual, um, waiver verification this year, where 100% of anybody asking for a waiver of fees, it has to bring in verification of their income. And we do think it's gonna have an impact, and, um, reduce that, that number, as much as perhaps by 10%, and so we're, we're thinking it's gonna be in that range, it should go down. Our, our fee, uh, free and reduced, uh, numbers were in the 20, high twenties, 26, 27% range, we expect it to drop into the teens, and so we're, we're hoping to take 10% off of that, 26%.
Goodness.
So, 16, 17%, so, uh, and, I was at South with registration, working through waivers and, um, the free and reduced application process with parents today, um, and we do think the numbers are dropping, so, we'll be, we'll be watching that really closely, because that impacts a lot. It impacts, um, well, one thing with the food services, the, the state, I think, was hearing from the schools, and we have a network, it's called, a social network called Peer-to-Peer, where we talk to each other through the IASBO website, and so we, I started a couple of those conversations, and it was starting to build, and I, ISB monitors that, they're part of IASBO, and I think they also understood that they had a problem, and actually, the first time, after we already decided to, to do the separate waiver program, uh, July 1st, they came out and said, "We're not gonna give you the list of the Medicaid people anymore," 'cause we were just, they didn't explain why, they just said, "We're just not providing it."
Sure, you're not gonna do it.
So we think, we think we got them to, so now, so that means all those individuals in the past that had been on free and reduced without it, without question, um, will probably drop as well, so it affects our food services, uh, what we think will be, those that'll be eligible for, for a reduced, we do still think there'll be some individuals that will, previously were free and reduced, that will still use the, the program, and so our, we expect our paid lunches to go up a little bit. In addition, we, we increased the, the, by, by mandate, by the National School Lunch Program, we had to increase the lunch prices by 15 cents, which is about a 6% increase, so, so that's why the food service is kinda up a little bit, even though we, we, um, didn't see the, the revenues come in last year, we, we, when I presented the June 30th information to you, I said, "I don't think we, you know, they didn't meet their goals," they actually did increase type A sales, they increased the lunch sales, but they, but there was a, a big drop in vending, uh, which we expected, that's like maybe 40, 50,000 dollars, you know, it's not a, vending is not a big thing, but the vending selections were restricted more heavily last year, and so the, the losses and the reduction really came from, uh, full-price meals, yeah, um, not type A meals, and, and so they, they actually did increase a participation in the, the type A, I'm sorry, I said type, uh, full-price meals, à la cartes sales, it's the à la cartes sales is where, another, so, people were not buying as much of the side stuff, and that's really, for us, a bigger profits area than the, the food, food service program, so, so that, so we're gonna, and, and we are on a whole new, uh, system for tracking that this year, uh, so we, we think we'll have better details in terms of, of analyzing that throughout the year and, and tracking it. Quest admits they got off to a rough start last year, remember, we, we approved them late, as well as the transportation, and, and, uh.
Pretty busy spring.
You know, so that was, that was one that, um, kinda surprised all of us, honestly, but, uh, they had a, there's a bad, it was a tough transition with going to the same vendors that, that Ameri, uh, um, can't even remember the name anymore, how quickly we forget, yeah, Ameri, AmeriMark used. And so, uh, they had to set up new vendor relationships, because a lot of our commodities were, were turned over to those companies already, because when AmeriMark, you do it a year in advance, and so, they had to start new relationships with new companies, and, and they had a whole different menu setup, so, they had a, I would say, a very tough first six months of, of getting all their menus and their recipes kinda set, so that also probably had, we believe, had an effect on their, an effect on their sales. So we'll be monitoring that a lot closer, now everybody, like the, the busing and the food service, the honeymoon is over, and, uh, uh, there's, there's less room for any kind of excuses in terms of that, and we have, we do have a good working relationship with, with both of those companies. So back to the registration fees, clearly, the, the biggest item, probably about a $300,000 boost there of that is, uh, uh, coming because of the, the one-on-one, uh, fee, um, and, uh, of the, of that fee, uh, again, about 300,000 is for, I'll get notes here, make sure I have the right piece, um, goes right to the lease, to cover the lease, a portion of the lease, and about 20 of that, or about 85,000 overall, is for, um, repairs. The, the Chromebooks that we have, um, are great devices, but their touchscreens are very expensive to repair, we, we had a pretty good number of repairs last year, um, just, just from cracked screens, a cracked screen is, costs 50% of the unit, it's 150 dollars if they crack a screen, and we're working to, to make that a lesser cost by doing the repairs ourselves and getting the parts, but, right now, we, we, and, and the tech department is setting this up to do that, so we're hoping to get those costs down, but it's, that's what has us a little bit nervous about this, and that's why we set the, the insurance at level at, at 20 dollars. Now, we can, we can look at this next year based on what our true waiver collections are, although typically, we don't, we don't adjust fees up or down, because we have more waivers, and we usually don't adjust them down, you know, when we have less, uh, we try not to, to put the burden on everybody because of that, but, um, uh, but we could look at that, and also, we can, we will, we'll wanna see what our real experience is with, with, uh, broken machines and, and repairs, and so, we could adjust that down next year a little, or up if we have to, I guess.
Would investing in a better case, maybe, help, uh, you know, a, a few dollars upfront?
Y'all got good cases.
Yeah, we, we did, although there's, there's, discussing with a lot of other, um, well, several other schools, I wouldn't say a lot of others, this, this was really the tech decision, uh, that, that you, you get too cumbersome of a case, kids don't use it at all, and so, it was trying to find a balance between, I guess, a case that's gonna protect it from, from a book hitting it, um, or, you know, something that happens in the backpack, you know, if you put something unusual, like a can or something in the backpack, and it's in the wrong spot, it's gonna get it no matter what case you have in it, but we did look, they did a lot of studying of different cases, and that, that's something that if we, you know, our experience may get us to, to do different cases, but, uh, I think Colleen liked the case.
Was that the most damaged, the backpack, or was it just accidentally dropping it on the ground? 'Cause I could see where you stick it with the box, and you put it on, and.
We didn't have that tracked well enough in the pilots, I mean, they just brought in a broken screen, and, and there wasn't really any notes taken, there were a couple were, but not, not enough to make a decision and say, "Yeah, it's all from backpacks," but.
Right.
I think that's, that's where the, um, 'cause certainly, there were some drops, but, um, I, I, my guess is that it's mostly backpacks.
Mine too.
Yeah. So, but, but I don't think we had the, the data there to tell us some things, and we had, we had different kinds of, uh, machines going on, so they weren't all the same machine, we started with different ones, and.
That's true.
And then got to the, this machine that they wanted last year, where we bought, um, all the one type, no, but, uh, so we had different things happen with different machines.
I can tell you, my daughter today said, "I don't wanna use the case, I just wanna put it in my backpack." And I said, "No, I want you to use the case and put it in your backpack," so I met, I can see, uh, right away, that being her instinct, I'm sure she's pretty typical, so.
Yeah.
Just a step they don't wanna have to go through.
Yeah, for this first year, we.
Interesting.
We're taking the, the stance that the first breakage is, is part of their insurance, or, and then it goes up to second and third, so it'll, I think, I don't remember exactly, I, um, but I think it's the third after the third, you're buying a new machine if you break, or, the less of, the lesser of the repair, or, or, you know, I think it goes to 75, and then 150.
Yeah, and the second occurrence is 75, and the third is 150, or cost of repair, yeah.
Or the less, or the lesser of that, or, you know, so, we're gonna eat some of the costs, and that's part of the fee, and that's something, we don't want it to ruin, you know, someone's, there should be enough in that reserve.
Accidents happen.
Yeah. It's just if that happens again and again, then you know they're not, they aren't in that case, and they're just, you know, and we think mom and dad will remind them to put it in the case. So the other, the other piece here that's really different on the, on the revenue side is the general and other state aid, and, and with all the problems in the state, I, I know you're missing, I mean, what makes you think we're gonna get more state money?
The first time I read this, I was like, what, what is he thinking?
There's, there's, a lot of things in our budget are always interrelated, and, and if you recall, at the June 30th, uh, year-end, our tuition was up, is actually was 3% over budget at the time.
Yeah.
Our, our, and also because we changed vendors, um, uh, with transportation, our transportation for special ed students, um, and, and was higher, um, and so, the, the one thing that has been fairly consistent has been reimbursement of special education costs, and our costs really were high last year, in fact, we had two years in a row where our tuition jumped more than 10%, um, but, there was a, and we, we knew it upfront, at last year's budget, this time last year, we, we presented the budget, we knew that we had a, a higher-than-normal enrollment expected, and, and now we expect it to drop back down to more normal level this year. So we expect our transit, our tuition cost to go down, but the costs last year were, were pretty high, and we get a pretty decent reimbursement out of that, and they've been fairly consistent with that, and, and I think of it, some of it is tied to their, uh, maintenance, maintenance of effort as it relates to federal funding, so I think they, they do need to keep spending a certain amount on special education to, to, for their own federal matching, so, anyways, it, we, we do have a, a bit of a high number on the, the state aid compared, the state aid itself is, we're expecting to be flat, but it's, it's really the special ed transportation and special ed tuition reimbursements that we had for placements we had outside of the district, that we expect that to go up, so, uh, those are the key, key things there, the rest of it's in the, in the memo, if we flip to expense now, um, you can see some of the things I just mentioned, the tuition is expected to drop pretty hard back down to where, I mean, it was, it was only 3% over budget, but we increased the budget 10% last year.
Yeah.
And it, it still went up by 13%, and so we're expecting that to roll back down this year, we, uh, Scott has done a, a great job of just looking through who's, who's coming in, and he knows where kids are leaving. It's, it's volatile area, it, we could get burned there, we watch it a lot, but, um, uh, we do expect this to be more of a normal year, we were down to, you know, in the, the low threes not too, too long ago, 3 million, so, uh, 3.9 is still a pretty heavy, uh, amount of expenditure to allocate to the tuition area. And the capital outlay, you can see in purchase services, it's, it's, uh, capital outlay is down primarily because of the O&amp;M fund, we're gonna lighten the load there, and, and that, and we're taking some of the larger projects off, and expect to pay for that with life safety funding, and a capital projects fund, so it won't, it won't be paid out of the operations and maintenance fund, along with purchase services, which are related to the architectural engineering costs, and also, we did the master facility plan last year, which, bulk of that cost came through last year, so there's, there's some reductions there in the purchase services area. Capital outlay will drop also in the educational fund, because we paid for some pilot Chromebooks last year out of, directly out of the, the ed fund, this year, we're doing it with a lease, and so you'll see in the, the fund balance, the first fund balance, the transfers went up by 700,000 dollars, that was mostly for the new lease costs and different, uh, so it's, it's getting paid out of a different fund, still comes out of the ed fund, but a different line item, it goes out as a transfer instead of coming out as, as a, a capital outlay item here. So overall, we expect, you know, if you. So, overall, we expect, you know, if you look at that, a 0.6% increase in our total expenditures. If you look at salaries and benefits, salaries, the target was 2% total compensation increase benefits. We do have some, some new staff coming in, and some of the collective bargaining agreements have retirement incentives that are built into it that will pay us back, but they trigger whether or not we give raises. So, actually, the teachers contract, this is the last year of that contract, so there really was no discussion or, you know, decisions really about that contract. And that's our largest one, obviously. But, anything that we negotiated this year was 2% or less. And that's really about it for the expenditures. We go to the last exhibit, and that's the non-operating funds and long-term debt. Debt service, you can see, has about $1.2 million balance in there. The revenues are 7.7 million, expends 11. Transfers in, $2.5 million. That's what's coming from the educational and building funds to pay for debt that we're paying for directly out of operations. And that's about $700,000 higher this year. The, the ending balance in there, if you look at the difference in the debt service, and I think it's important to point it out, is that it's going from about a $1.3 million to about a $300,000. And that's because we're going to do a detailed analysis of the debt service fund and see how much is, is available in that fund to, to be used directly to pay down some of the life safety bonds. We, if we issue $3.5 million in life safety bonds, which is our guess right now, we could pay the first million right out of our debt service fund without levying a new tax for that. And so, that's, that's, that would be the type of plan that I expect to bring to you for funding this. So, and the reason that that money accumulates in the debt service is either long-term interest, it's just never been transferred out, which we could move that to any fund we want, but we just left it in there, and also, excess levy. When you levy for debt service, it automatically goes to the county and the county automatically adds 1% to whatever you request for loss plus in cost. And we've had a very good record in terms of how much, and so, we haven't lost 1% each year, and it just accumulates in that fund. And this has been for 20, 30 years. And originally, we're going to use, my, my long-term plan was to use some of this to help offset that capital project. Well, we wiped that out this year, so we don't have that capital, $3 million capital project problem anymore. And so, we, I feel pretty comfortable in bringing up a good portion of this, and we're going to work that into the funding plan for the life safety. So, we should be able to keep the life safety cost very nominal when we issue those bonds. I've done a first preview, it'll be, you know, the, believe that for the first few years, it'll be less than $10 a year impact to our taxpayers to issue those bonds. So, it, it should be a pretty nominal cost, and for what it does to our operating funds, hopefully, it'll be something you can accept. Look at the long-term debt, well, actually, I'm sorry, capital projects is the next one listed there. The $126,000 is really the residue that's left in the master's site plan funding. Revenues there, there's 3.5 million of that revenue is proposed new bonds around there. We're putting that number right now in the tentative budget. And we expect to do about a million dollars' worth of projects just in the next year. The rest of it, we would do over the next five years, probably. Now, the long-term debt, I always like to put that up there just because I think we have an unusual district where we are, just about one-third of our long-term debt is being paid from our operating funds. And I always like to point that out because there's that many districts that are in this position. We've, we've done this where we, we really are trying to keep the burden down and pay it from operating funds, and so, I always like to show you what the long-term debt. And you can see a new issue there, $3.5 million, but we'll be maturing 7.6 million out of debt service tax items and then, but paid from operating funds, we'll be paying another $2 million off and maturities. And in addition to that, interest, there's another $500,000 of interest that we're taking from our operating funds. So, that's the big overview. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
I'm not, I'm not sure how to ask this question, and I should have called you earlier today, but when we did the, we refinanced some of the bonds last spring, there was something we weren't able to do at the time.
Right.
Is, are we going to be able to do that? Because I think that was going to save us some money, too.
Well, you know, that's still something we can do. I think, I think the, right now, the, the funding bonds for, for the life safety, I mean, that was, there was a 1.5 million funding there. It made sense to combine that with the, the refunding. We will have another opportunity to refund some, some debt certificates next year, and we might look at doing it in the next year.
It would be next year, okay.
It's such a small, 1.5 million, it's, the $3.5 million of life safety bonds will basically do the same thing.
Got it.
It takes the pressure off of our, our operating funds and it kind of gets us to the same level. And we can still keep that, kind of holding that as a safety net.
Right.
Based on whatever does happen with, with the state. And so, we're accomplishing the goal a different way at this point with life safety by taking pressure off our operating funds, rather than issuing a bond and putting it right into our operating funds.
Got it.
So, it's a little different.
Thank you. Good to know.
So, this, this is tentative. It needs to be on display. It'll be on display for 30 days. And then, it does need, whether we like it or not, we need to approve a budget by the end of September, even if we make amendments or adjustments to it later on. But legally, we, a school needs to have their budget approved by the end of September, so we would need something at the county by the end of September. So, at the next board meeting, I believe it's September 21st, I think, and that's when we would bring this for, yeah, a business meeting, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mark, and thank you for everybody who worked on this. This was a lot of work.
Oh, thank you, yeah. Dree Atharaj is the new business manager. She's been here a year now. She's, she's, her son got married this weekend, so it was a little challenge for everybody. And I went on vacation, which I rarely do, in August. So, it was, it was fun putting this one together, but we got it.
Thank you. Thank you. Freedom of Information Acts?
We actually had no Freedom of Information Acts in District 99 last month.
Wow!
Last time that happened.
Doesn't happen very often.
Funny.
Having a hard time remembering.
Moving on to the consent agenda, is there any item any member of the board would like to reserve for further discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some moved.
Do we need to name the items, or?
I think you have to name it.
Oh, I'm not in that spot, okay.
Oh, would you like me to move? I've got it.
Yeah, go ahead and move.
I would move the approval of the consent agenda, which includes the personnel report for appointment of certified contract adjustments, appointment of classified and transfer of positions for classified, the personnel report for retirements for classified and resignations classified, the financial pages, and the approval of the 2015, 2016 grant programs.
Do you want to second, Terry?
Yeah, I'll second that. I'm sorry, I'm just reading.
So, on the financial pages, you were looking for some input from us. So, should we talk about that right now as a discussion?
Well, then, let's reserve that.
Want to take it off, or do you want to pull that out?
It doesn't matter.
Or we'll just go now? Okay.
The information is fine.
Thank you.
It was about the presentation of it, and they was looking for some feedback.
Yeah.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Don Renner?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka?
Aye.
So, to the, to your point about the presentation of the different check, check...
Registers.
Check registers. Yeah, we, you know, I had some individuals in the past say, really, it's the same line 10 times in a row or 20 times in a row, and it's, you know, it makes it really cumbersome to go through. And Rod worked very closely with, really, Dree, honestly, and to find a way to import data off of the system a little cleaner. And we think it, this will be easy to put together. It's not, we didn't want to create a thing that took us a half a day. It's really a rush to get, close the, close the books, get them to the treasurer and get them back in time for the board packet. So, that's a, the first week or so of every month is always pretty tight. And so, we didn't want to do something that took us a half a day. And we think we can pull this information pretty quickly in this format, and I really like it. I hope you guys like it.
I do, too.
If it's, if it's okay with you, we'd like to go with that format and just have that in there.
Please and thank you. My, my kind of...
My only request was that, was that somebody would QA it for the first couple of months, just to make sure it's...
Someone what?
Would, would make a quality check the first couple of months, to make sure that everything was pulling over.
Sure. Yeah. And it's, in the past, we didn't even have it all in check order sometimes because it was done by fund. And so, that was one improvement we made last year to make sure it wasn't, so it's easier to prove.
Okay, great.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, do we need to?
No, we'll just, if you had an issue, I would, I would give you the old format, or if you're okay with it, we'll move forward with that.
Okay. Moving on to the recommendations for action, we have the approval, approval of the 2016, 2016 tentative budget. Do we have a motion?
I move to accept the tentative budget for 2015-16 for display purposes and establish 7:45 PM September 21st, 2015, in the Administrative Service Center Community Room for the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. And a lovely recitation.
Second.
Don seconds?
Thank you.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Don Renner?
Aye.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
And Deb Boyle?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka, aye. We have no...
Nancy Cupka, I'm sorry.
All business or no business?
We do not.
We do not? Okay. Reception of visitors, this is the second reception of visitors intended for audience members to address the board on any topic pertaining to Community High School District 99.
I'm so sorry.
Hearing none, we'll move on to communications and announcements. Len, Don, any updates online?
I still have to meet. I think you meet in September is the first meeting.
Okay.
I did hear from Ms. Agnos today, the executive director, and like anyone else who's associated with the state legislature and the budget, she's spending a lot of time in Springfield, which is one of the reasons she has not been able to come back and meet with us on any kind of regular basis this summer, so...
I'm sure she's got her pencil. SASC, Julia?
SASC, we, the board has not met, but I will say that today was the, or the first day for the staff to be in session, and they were doing, I'm not, I wasn't able to attend, but they were going to do lots of training seminars and what have you for the staff. And there was an item from last month's report that I did not report, and that was that the, the board that has, or the district that has been serving as the fiscal agent for SASC is, which is District 66 forever and ever, has decided they can't do it anymore. So, Dr. Volpe did send out a request to districts, and I'm not sure, you know, whether, whether or not we'd be able to do that. But anyway, they're looking for another fiscal agent. But, long-term, I think they're also, we're also looking at actually reorganizing the SASC board so that we can become our own agent, our own fiscal agent. So, I'll probably have more to report on that over the next year, and that will probably change how the board is made up as well.
Thanks, Tilly. And anything on the Illinois Humanities Council?
We haven't met either, but I am serving on a subcommittee that has to do with education in Illinois. And what they're going to try to do, is going to be interesting, is gather groups of citizens throughout the state to talk about how they see education, like people who actually are recipients of education. And I, it'll be interesting to hear what they have to report over the next couple of months. So, we'll be meeting in a couple of weeks, I think. So, we'll, I'll have more to report on how that's going to be set up. But, it's a pretty major emphasis of the council for the coming year.
Terry, 99 Education Foundation?
We are still working on our strategic plan, and we are meeting again on Thursday, so that's about all I have.
IAS, IASB?
I don't have anything at this time, but I did kind of chuckle at what Julia put, and, and so, all of you just read the bottom, the bottom part, which I thought was just rather interesting and timely.
Very timely. Yeah, we want to see about 12 people.
Very interesting. Thanks, Deb. Okay, so, we're moving on to the upcoming board meetings. The next board meeting will be September 14th here. It will be, the public portion of the meeting will be at 6:30. So, if you wish to address the board, to be here at 6:30 on the 14th. And then, we will have, the next, the next business meeting will be on the 21st at 7:30 here. Do we need to go through everything in the parking lot?